Thank you very much Kathleen. I'm going to put the governance chart up that some of you have seen before. Many of you have said it was helpful, particularly last time to have Greta do a quick review of the changes that are coming up. I'm going to do that this time, probably a little shorter than Greta did last time. And then we'll move into the positions that we need nominations for the process to do that. You can see on the agenda what is there. So I'm going to share screen. And put up this. Can everybody see it? Good. So some things are remaining the same or similar. Some things are being added and some things have been transitioned away from. So if you look at this from the left, the Board of Trustees is remaining essentially the same. I do understand that they're wanting to add two members. So that is something that will happen. The Commission on Diocese and Organizations is new. That is made up of representatives, probably the directors of, but it could also be representatives from the four diocesan entities, Rock Point School, Brookhaven Treatment and Learning Center, Rock Point Commons, and Mission Farm. There's been concern from some that we might add too much to the plates of the directors of these groups. The intent really is for them to meet about four times a year to coordinate, to support each other, to get support from the diocese into for more clearly understand their connection to the diocese. I think it will not be onerous, but actually supportive. Then we have the Commission on Missional Vitality. I like to think when I just visualize this as a left side and a right side. The right side is the Committee on Ministry, which will continue fairly much the way it has, meeting the canonical requirements for a committee on ministry that works on help on works with people who are discerning ministry, holy orders in the diocese, but also we are hoping takes on some of the work of opening the discernment process to other things other than holy orders for laypeople within our diocese. Then on the other side, coming down from the Commission on Missional Vitality is something brand new, which is the Committee on Congregational Development, Development and Formation. Some of us are acronym calling it CCDF because that kind of flows off your tongue. Within that will be the Committees on Racial Justice and Healing, the Creation Care Committees, which already exist, but other programs and opportunities for congregations and missions in the area of mission growth and stewardship and ecumenical ministries. This one makes me happy. This is one that we really want people to be on, lay and clergy. It's where the kind of the juicy stuff, the mission and the ministry will happen. So please consider being on that or convincing other people to be on it. That would be terrific. Then another new entity is the Commission on Finance. And we're already getting several people nominating themselves and I'm delighted with that. This group under coordinates with all of the others and provides coordination of financial information, both it's coming in and going out, provides financial information to the Standing Committee, helps planning the all of the financial matters for the diocese. We've found in the Thrive work that there was not a lot of clear flow in and out of financial information. So we really wanted this group to be important and very involved in all of the work of the diocese so that our financial matters are clear. We've determined we're not on a financial cliff, but we are on a financial hill. And hopefully this group will help us with that. You'll note underneath that diocese and operations, including staff and programs, such as the work of the Ecumenical Officer Chaplaincies, Canons, Northern New England Regional Disciplinary Board, they sit alongside these structures. And there are some other structures that already exist, which I'm going to be talking to you about now. So I'm going to stop the share for a second here. I think if it's all right, I'd like to go ahead. Oh, I didn't say please use the raise hand function that's in reactions. That puts you on my screen and Kathleen's screen sort of in the order you raise your hand, but I'm going to go ahead and share one more document first, and then please feel free to ask questions or make comments. So I'm going to share a screen one more time. Here we are. All right. So this just outlines what we need. So under the Commission on Missional Vitality is that exciting committee I told you about on Congregational Development and Formation, CCDF. We need six to eight people, at least two clergy and two lay, and we'd like the number of clergy not to exceed the number of lay persons. There will be three-year terms. They will meet monthly. We we've decided in the nominations committee and other places that we're not going to at the convention, try to elect a three-year person, a two-year person, and a one-year person. That would be far too complex. Instead, we're going to ask that committee when they first meet to figure out who to people to nominate, to volunteer to be the one-year, two-year, or three-year person, and then we will be on a alternating schedule in future diocese and conventions for election. The Committee on Ministry is remaining essentially the same. It's got but one clergy person and one lay person are rotating off this year. So we need two more appointed. Those are appointed by the bishop, not elected. But the CCDF are elected. The Commission on Finance needs six to eight people, at least two clergy and two lay, three-year terms. They will meet monthly. And again, the assignment of terms will be decided on by the committee at the first meeting. Those are elected. As always, General Convention Deputies are coming up. Needed for clergy and for lay. This is for people to attend the General Convention in Louisville in 2024. We have got plenty of people nominating themselves for both the lay and clergy positions already. Standing Committee needs one clergy and one lay. Those are four-year terms because I believe that's canonical. They meet monthly and we have some names, but we could, if you'd like to nominate yourself for that, that would be fine. The Standing Committee has a slightly expanded duties as they're receiving more financial information and approving things and also supporting the bishop in as she needs support. I am going to stop here because I believe we have somebody else later on who's going to tell us about things that already exist. So let's, are there questions before we move on to our what to expect in terms of the nominating process? Yes. Eight, four, seven, nine, oh, two. Please unmute.
I'll put my name in. I'm Colleen Gates and my question is the Commission on Vitality, is that basically the old group on Commission for Christian Formation?
That is a great question. It is. It is. I thought you were going to say, is that basically the old diocese and council? And I was going to say, no, but we're hoping diocese and council people who are interested in mission and ministry would nominate themselves. There is. Is Susan Boladoll here? I'm, let's see.
Yeah.
Stan, I'm here. Hi.
Care to speak to that question because I want to throw that to you and your sort of your position as canon.
Sure. Thanks very much. Hello, everyone. Get my voice jacked up here for you. Commission on Missional Vitality. So the best answer I have, Colleen, is yes and no. How's that? Some of the same type of work area. Sure. Formation, right? Forming disciples of Jesus Christ. You betcha. What's not going to be the same, though, what will be new is this emphasis on being a missional church. So we might have resources, programs, events, different offerings at times, along with that ongoing discernment process that we're encouraging all of our congregations to move through. So there will be locally identified needs at times that this group of people could be responding to. And I also believe and in consultation with colleagues have determined that we're going to set about this on this platform of being a missional church, being out there following Jesus. This isn't only about gee whiz, can we train four more people to teach Sunday School, et cetera, et cetera? We have all those needs this time and we really want to stand really clearly on the theology of God being with us and God's doing different things in different places. So that that missional sense is really going to be cultivated and nurtured and hopefully spread out by the work that this particular group of people will be doing.
Thank you, Susan. The I just want one another notice that we're not having people who are staff or canons in the diocese chair any of these committees, but Susan, I believe, will be the the staff liaison, if you will, to this particular committee. Does that sound right, Susan?
Sounds okay, Stan. I can't really speak to that, though, myself. Thank you very much.
Bishop is eventually, maybe not today, but we
Good idea.
We're actually going to need to figure out how we get staff support to each of these new groups. Greta, I just, I didn't, I know you're just listening today, but you've talked about the Episcopal Church, the big church, having a particular group that this, this this committee can can get support from and liaison with. Could you speak?
Yeah, Stan, thank you. There's a, I finally remembered the actual name of it. It's the College for Congregational Development. And I remember when I was in Rhode Island, our congregational development folks going to these conferences and just being completely jazzed up by what they were hearing and learning and working with colleagues from all across the Episcopal Church as they looked at formation and mission and all of these things together. So the great news about this new CC, I know my alphabet, CCDF, is that it will have this national support because there are in every diocese, there are people doing this work and they're gathering together as a body. So it's a very exciting. That is the place to be if you're interested in mission and sort of the work of the church.
And should I, can I add to that as well? And actually, that's not through the Episcopal Church Congregational College for Congregational Development. But it is offered in different places around the country, but there lots of resources and we, especially as we begin to have our constellations, we've been connecting with Tri-Tank and others who will be resourcing our congregations, but that work is ongoing and we're continuing to find places for formation and in particular with a mind towards groups that are able to help us to make them fit who we are in Vermont, you know, whatever is offered has to be applicable to different into our situation in a rural setting. And that sometimes is a hesitance that people in congregations have because they've noted in other programs that things tend to be for big churches or for cities or whatever. So as we connect with resources beyond Vermont, that is always at the top of our mind and those conversations are already taking place.
Thank you very much, Bishop. That's helpful. And again, I'm just going to underline what Greta said. If you have a passion for mission, ministry, formation, please, please nominate yourself. Collins, please. Your turn. Collins, you were muted.
I said, there we go. Hi. Did I understand you to say the Standing Committee is a four-year term as opposed to these others that are three-year terms?
Yes, you did. Don't ask me why. Paul, do you want to say anything about that? I think it's
Know that that's the way things are structured in our present canons, and I believe there's no plan to change that in terms of the Standing Committee and its structure.
Okay, so it just is the way it was always set up.
I'm pretty sure it's the national standard.
Is that right? Okay.
I believe it's in the Episcopal Church canons that way.
Okay, I just was curious if I heard that right.
Yes, you did. Thank you for the question. It was a good one. And if there are no other questions at this point, Paul, why don't you go ahead with what to expect from the two conventions, a little bit about the nominating process, and then we'll hear from Canticle.
Okay, there is at the moment a call out there for nominations. Not only are we trying to field a group of candidates to be elected for all of these new entities that will come into being as the way we govern the life of the diocese, but there are the tried and true traditional continuing entities that also need to have some elections provided for them. Amongst them are, as I think Stan mentioned earlier, the trustees, but also the Brookhaven School Trustees, the Rock Point Board, entities like that will also need new members at convention that will be elected. The full list is there, put out in the mountain, accessible on the diocese and website for all of the positions for which we will be taking elections at the upcoming diocese and convention. So people are also needed to be nominated for those. We are working to develop the slate of the nominating committee, which has had an expanded role to really be proactive about nominations for these various positions. The deadline to submit nominations using the form that's available on the website for the diocese is this Friday, 16th of September. This is so we can gather all those nominees' names, have things worked up together and be able to share that with the diocese prior to convention and prepare for the elections themselves. So do be mindful of that deadline if you have interest yourself in running for one of these organizations or positions that you make sure you follow through with the paperwork required to submit a nomination by Friday of this week, the 16th.
Paul and Kathleen has very nicely put up both the description of the things that need filling and also the nomination form.
Right, it's there in the chat. The the other deadline to be mindful of, if you are a voting delegate or even a person who wants to attend any or all of convention as a guest, you will want to follow through with a registration for your appearance at convention. That deadline is the 24th of September. It's coming up very fast. So likewise, the form is available at the diocese and website. You will want to indicate when you plan to attend, what portion of convention you are planning to be present for. Convention this year will be divided into two parts as it was last year. However, this year we get the opportunity to gather in person once again. That will be done on Saturday, October 8th, at our cathedral in Burlington, where we will have opportunity to gather for worship and spend time together with program that is going to be provided for us with two speakers who will be there. That'll start at 9:00 AM and run through the afternoon. Lunch will be provided for everyone attending. So we do need to know if people are attending the Saturday session in person. It'll also be livestreamed for those who are not able to make it in person. And then the business session, where these elections and all other business before convention, including canonical changes to bring into effect this new envisioned structure will be on the evening of the 13th of October. That will be a Zoom-only business session of convention. And if you are a voting member of the diocese coming to convention, you'll also have to indicate your plans to be there so you can be part of the full quorum present for the voting purposes at that meeting on the 13th. I think those are the basics about what's coming down the road with various deadlines and dates that people need to be mindful of. All of this is available on the diocese and website under the Diocese and Convention 2022 panel of the website. For most information you need, you'll find it there. And it's also going to be continually brought forward to you in the mountain as it continues to be published between now and convention itself. As we did in the past, voting will be very similar to the past. And I gather, Kathleen, you can tell us a little more about what the voting process for these elections will look like, right?
I can. Thank you, Paul. I almost all of your names here are familiar, but I don't know absolutely everyone. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Kathleen Moore and I work with Canticle Communications, which manages communications for the diocese as well as particularly in convention time, some of the tech aspects of holding these online events. Paul has frozen, so I just want to make sure that I haven't frozen. No, people can. Okay, good. So some of you who served as delegates may remember way back two years ago, it was 2020. I know that's hard to remember or think about. But that year, we actually planned on using two different kinds of voting. One was Zoom voting, and I'll go over what that is. And the other was called Election Buddy Voting. At our pre-convention hearing, we actually held a test ballot using Election Buddy. And then what happened is we didn't need it because both in 2020 and 2021, there were, there were no votes by order. There was not anything that that was complex enough to actually need that system. This year is different. We know at the very least that we are electing General Convention Deputies, which are vote by order. We know we have some other, some elections that may not may actually be contested. We have other things that we just want to make sure come through and are done correctly and precisely. So I'm not going to go over all the ins and outs of this because that is what the pre-convention hearing is for. But just to sort of put you at ease, I will have to go over with, we will have to go over with the chancellor exactly which kinds of votes will we will use Zoom voting for. But one guess is, for those of you who have been to a Vermont convention before, every year we have to vote to recess the Diocese of Vermont convention. It's very funny. And then convene as the incorporators of the Brookhaven School. That, my guess, is an example of something the chancellor is going to be comfortable and the bishop is going to be comfortable using a Zoom vote for. And so if you'll remember, the way Zoom votes work is you're just on Zoom, just like this, and a little window comes up and you select yes or no, or whatever it is. So very, very simple. And we've gotten very accustomed to that. Election Buddy, which again, we've tested before quite successfully, but never actually had to use in action, is a little bit more complex. And the way it will work is it is very important that you all register because as you register, you will be put in the Election Buddy system. It will know whether you are a lay or a clergy delegate, and that matters in terms of our voting. You will not have to enter that every time. It will know, you will see that you have been entered correctly. And once you register, this is how we will know to send you both your Zoom link and your Zoom credentials to get onto the actual convention, but also a special link for Election Buddy. And so in during the convention, you will have one single link. Everyone will have one single link, not multiple links, which is good. So if you lose it, you just go back to it again. And you will either need to use another browser. So you have Zoom and then on your computer, you might have your browser open and use that browser to be on that link. Or my recommendation is you have a device ready, your phone, your iPad, something like that. Right. Thank you, Stan, to use just for voting. I kind of like that system. It just helps me to have Zoom take up the whole screen and then be able to almost, it feels like having a little voting device. But again, do not be overwhelmed. This is going to be super smooth. We've done this with quite a few dioceses before. And again, many of you have already tested successfully the Election Buddy system. Does, hopefully that helps. Is that good, Paul? All right.
Do people have questions? Paul, is there more you'd like to say before I ask for questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, and we're still going to have Jenny Ogilvie is here now. She's going to describe the existing entities that need things filled. But before we have Jenny do that, are there people who have questions about what Kathleen has said or Paul has said? Okay, no hands up. I'm going to share a screen and Jenny's going to talk about the the existing governance bodies and the 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 groups that are needed. So I started with this. I'm just going to Jenny, I'm just going to scroll up and get rid of the new things. And let you start here with what you see in front of you. Or however, however you want to do it.
So I'm going to start with the
I was going to offer an opening prayer and we can never have too much prayer. So Jenny, would you start your, what you were going to pray in the beginning?
I just, I just want you to know that my calendar said this meeting was at seven. So I apologize. And but while you were starting your meeting, I was, I was definitely praying. So, but I will offer, I will offer you a prayer that I chose for tonight.
Thank you.
We welcome you, Spirit of God, you who seek our company and choose to make yourself known to us. We are grateful for your many blessings, including bringing us together at this time in this place. We ask that you would use this time to challenge us, to encourage us, to change us, that we may continue to grow and be transformed and in this process find hope to offer the world around us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead now with your report.
Okay, so my report has to do with the openings besides the one that Stan mentioned at the beginning. And if I, I'll just, I guess it would be easier to go. I'm going to go in alphabetical order. There you go. No, I'll go according to how this is. Go, yeah. So we have the General Convention Deputies that need to be elected this year for convention that is in 2024. And as always, we need four clergy and four lay. Next year, next fall, we'll elect the alternates to the alternate deputies to convention. But this year we are electing the the convention deputies. And if you, if you're not, I would suggest if you know anybody who's been a deputy before, and there's lots of us, including me, it, you might want to have a conversation with them before you decide that you would like to do this. And they can explain a little bit about what it's like. I was talking to Jenny Knowles yesterday and she was new this year and she really caught up to speed fairly quickly. And it was a very moving and exciting experience for her and she does want to go again. So that's great. So those openings for clergy and for lay. The Standing Committee is the let's see, the Standing Committee is a committee that is the consent to elect the bishops around the country. And it also has the authority in the diocese if the bishop is absent, absent. And it reviews and approves candidates for ordination. It approves sales of property. It receives and approves the diocese and budget and receives reports from the Commission on Finance and periodic reports from other committees and commissions. And so that committee needs, they meet monthly and they are needing one clergy and one lay. So they're meeting monthly themselves, but then they're going to meet quarterly with other
I'm sorry, that's
Other parts of the
quarterly with the the heads of the other entities.
Right, exactly. So the Provincial Senate is, the Senate is, our Provincial Senate is composed of Province One. We are Province One, which is actually, in our case, all of New England. And so they meet And so they meet for an official meeting once a year. That meeting is coming up actually relatively soon after our convention meets. And one of the people that was, was due to still be on the Senate is not able to, to go to that meeting. So he decided to withdraw or to resign from that position so that we can elect somebody who can go, who could go to that, to that particular meeting, which happens, I believe, in early November.
Is that Jenny, is it a layperson or either?
Um, well, the person that is, like, that is not going is a layperson.
So we need to replace that with a layperson.
Yeah.
That's what it says on the website. So just, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the title for disciplinary board is a very complicated entity to, to, to fill that board. But we know that we do not have any elections this year. We will have some for the next two years, but none this year.
It's, it's a board made of
Trustees.
Is that right, Jenny? It's made up of Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. Is that right? It's cross diocese.
Right.
Make sure people know, right? Go ahead.
And that's why it's, it's a little bit more complicated. So the trustees of the diocese are increasing their members. And these are now going to be three-year terms instead of seven-year terms, from what I understanding. And so that, that will be a little easier obligation for people who are running for the trustees of the diocese. Seven years is, is a long time, but these are going to be three-year terms. And we need two people. And it can be either clergy or lay. So trustees of the diocese, the Brookhaven School trustees, as Kathleen just mentioned, that's a, the Brookhaven School is a separate, when we have a separate time to, to go over the Brookhaven School or talk about the Brookhaven School and vote. So there in Brookhaven, in Chelsea, Vermont, is Brookhaven School. It's been there for many, many, many years. I know it was there when I was very young, when my dad was involved in that. And this is a school and treatment center. And the trustees oversee the work of that school and treatment center. And at this point, they need one person, either lay or clergy, to run for that board, for that, for that board of trustees.
Jenny, Bob, Bob Wilson is actually telling us that we need two. So
We need two, okay.
Correct, Bob? There. All right.
When I asked for, it was only one, but two is
Jenny, it just happened, one, one gentleman that's been on the board has been appointed by the governor to a oversight committee for GCF. And so he has a conflict of interest now.
Oh, okay. Wow. So it's, all right. That's good to know. Thank you, Bob, for that information. So we need two layer clergy. And they meet again once a month, usually on Zoom. A couple of times a year, they try to get together in person. That would be at Christmas time. And in June, May or June, when there's a graduation that happens. And so those two meetings for the year are in person, but the rest at this time are in, are on Zoom. So those of you who are a distance away from Chelsea could consider running for that Brookhaven School. The Rock Point Commons Board. The Rock Point Commons Board also meets monthly. And they oversee part of the group that oversees the 130 beautiful acres of Rock Point. And the work that is done, the work in ministry that's done on Rock Point Commons. And you may be asked also, most, most of the members of the Rock Point also serve on a subcommittee. And the subcommittees are finance, partnership, and programs, land use, or infrastructure. And I believe that they need one person, we need to vote for one person, either clergy or lay.
And I think we
Rock Point School is, is a board that guides the, the school that is on the Rock Point property. And the Rock Point School Board, there's quite a few people on that board. And there's a lot of people that come onto that board because their children attended or they were teachers or friends of, of, of the school. And they've, they wanted to serve because of the wonderful experience their children and the teachers had. So at this point, they do not need any people to be elected because they've got a lot of people that, that they have that are due to come onto the board. And the Mission Farm is, I think eventually we will be electing people for their board. But right now, they are in the midst of restructuring that whole, the whole of Mission Farm. And so, and that's all very exciting, but at this point, we have no election needed. So I think that we covered all of them.
Thank you, Jenny. Before you came, I was singing your praises, saying you've often been sort of out there by office the, as the nominee committee, and it's been great to work with you. And I really appreciate the service you've done to the diocese in all of these years and continue to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Stan. I appreciate you coming on board.
Questions?
And Paul, and Paul leading us. Paul is just a wonderful leader of our, of our group, of, of the dispatch of business. Amazing. Only having been in this diocese for a short period of time, but he's doing a wonderful, wonderful job. So it's really wonderful.
Questions for Jenny or Paul or anybody? We still have Amy Spagnu to go, but any quest?
I just noticed that Nancy Gordon had asked a question about when the votes will be conducted. And hopefully the bishop's answer in the chat does give the answer needed, which is that all these elections will happen during the business session on the 13th of October at the business session of convention. So that's when all this takes place.
Nancy, did that answer the question satisfactorily for you?
Yes, it was just something that I had heard earlier that sounded like some might be conducted in person. And I was just curious about when we would do that, know that, but all of them will be via election. Gotcha. Thank you.
I'll just say that the in-person is all formation and reconnecting. So it's, it's a different kind of part of, of convention.
Which I'm very excited. I just mentioned, hopefully, maybe you already did this, Paul or Stan, but just remember that we would really appreciate if you are nominating yourself or somebody else, make sure that person knows that you're nominating them. We need those nominations in by the 16th of September, which is really coming up. The end of this week, I believe, Friday. So please hurry and do that. And you also need to go onto the website and get the nomination form. And we, we, we need to receive the nomination form also at the same time so that we can put that all together before the voting happens. So you'll have a chance to see who you're voting for. We've received some of the nomination forms, but we've still got quite a few left to come.
We do. So please, please, please nominate yourselves, urge other people to nominate themselves. We have, the only one that we have is kind of full at this point is General Convention. Everything else still needs people. So again, I think particularly for the CCDF, the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation, that's going to be an exciting place to be. Where the good piece of news is we're getting people from all over the diocese. They're not all clumping up in one county. You know how those people in Orange County clump up. I was just teasing. But anyway, I think we're getting plenty of, of geographical distribution, but we still need people in that one, in finance, and in the ones that Jenny just nicely reviewed.
Colleen, did you have a question? Just have to unmute.
There. Yes, I do. I wanted to ask Jenny that on the form for nominations, was that on that link, the job, jot.com or something? It was very confusing. So how do we know that you received the nominations that we put forward? Because we never got anything back from it.
Oh, you mean, are you talking about the survey that you got?
Well, it said to nominate people.
Yes, it's, I've put the link in the, in the chat and Colleen, we can talk about this offline, but I can now and see.
That one.
Colleen, two things happened. There was a survey that we sent out asking for people to let this pre-convention nominating committee know anybody they thought would be good in those positions. And what we did in our pre-convention nominating committee is tried to contact every one of those people whose name we received to ask them to then please to nominate themselves on the nominating form. Does that make it a little clear?
Colleen, I can tell you, we have not received a nomination form from you. You will, if you do, you do receive an email confirmation. So and if you have any trouble, I'll put my, I'll put, I'll put our email address in the
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Colleen.
Is at diopermont.org.
These kind of nuts and bolts questions are very important.
And Ellen, Ellen McCulloch has a question about are there nominations from the floor at convention? And I have to admit that I don't know if that's procedurally something that's entertained here in the diocese of Vermont, given my very short tenure within it. Bishop may know. It looks like she does.
Well, I, I will say that that is technically a thing that we can do. And but I will also say that, you know, the, the work that we're embarking on is really, really, I mean, not that it's never been, not, not been important always. But I do encourage people to, you know, give lots of thought ahead of time. And that, you know, sometimes from the floor nominations are great. And sometimes we're just, you know, taking any, anybody that will, you know, say yes to something. And so I want people to think hard about, you know, if they do that, it's not easy to fill slots after, you know, we've had the voting. But I don't want people to feel pressured to do something in the spur of the moment. But certainly that is part of the, the rules that, that we follow. Yeah, pray.
Good answer.
Before, before you submit your name or before you nominate someone else. Because this is such, such important and exciting work. And you know, the work that all of the Thrive members put into this. I, I'm saying it every single time, hundreds of hours. Sure, you don't have to pray for a hundred hours before you decide to say yes. But it's, it was thoughtful work. So please be thoughtful about nominations.
Thank you, Bishop. Based on that, I have a question for Kathleen in terms of the voting, cantical voting. If there's a nomination from the floor, can that just simply be added to the voting? The electronic voting process?
It will take time, and it will mean that we're all here later. And yes.
Because one of the, the, the IT piece of it. But it is possible. But again, it's just as Bishop Shannon said, please, please nominate yourself, urge people to nominate themselves. Remind people we need that by this coming Friday. These are exciting positions. They think they will really serve our diocese well in terms of clarifying find the flow of financial information, really making us a missional diocese. It's exciting stuff. And I, I said this last time, but I'd like to say it again before Amy goes. We're being watched by other dioceses around the Episcopal Church. And they're not saying, oh, poor Vermont. They're saying, what's Vermont doing? We might want to do something like that. So this is kind of an exciting time, and we're in an exciting edge. And thanks to all of you and to you, Bishop Shannon, for sort of pushing us forward into some new forms and some new ways of being. So it's, it's an exciting time. So thank you. Amy, would you like to talk, I mentioned this piece about terms of service, but would you please jump in here?
Sure. Thank you, Stan. I think my colleagues have done a fantastic job kind of covering the big picture. But again, the overarching theme is we need you. None of this works without you. So the new, the new structures in particular are all three-year terms, as they've been envisioned. And the intent is not that we are going to elect a new group of people every three years, like completely every three years. If you remember back to your basic civics constitution, US Constitution 101, the, the closest analog to what we're, what we are hoping the process will look like is that what was used to establish the United States Senate way back when. Right? And if you remember, it says every, every one-third of the Senate is elected every six, every two years, two six-year terms. But when they started out, it was staggered. So you have some states that elected for two years, some for four, others for six, and then one could be reelected at the end of that point. That's basically what we envisioned as, as far as this particular thing goes. We did not want to encumber the process of convention, doing all this by having to elect, oh, this person, I want a one-year term, I want a two-year term, I want a three-year term. We want to elect to that body. And then within the body, those who get elected will hopefully discern and decide who, who will serve those for one or two or for full three years. But at the end of, say, a one- or two-year term, you will be able to stand for election again for a full three-year term. And if you've ever replaced vestry members within your parish, and we've done it here a couple of times in, in the last I mean, at least since I've been here, since 2019. Basically, we elect, it, it's the same general idea. So once that person finishes out, finishes out that term, then they can be elected for one of their own. So again, that's, that's the basic, that's, that's the very basic piece of the process. And again, we, we trust that the, that the, the new groups will do their own work around, around organization and so forth. Once they get, once they get going. And that's, that's, this is probably the shortest and probably the easiest piece of this. But it's also one, again, that does take thought and prayer and discernment. Are there any questions about terms?
We're talking particularly now about the Commission on Finance and with the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation that will, that will meet and then determine who's going to take the one-year, two-year, three-year slot. Questions? My only request will be that you let the nominations committee know, once you've met after convention, who's doing one, who's doing two, and who's doing three, so we can be on top of that in future conventions. Bishop, I have a question for you. I think I know the answer.
Yeah, go ahead. Hand her hand up.
Great. Why don't you go first?
Thanks, Stan. Maybe it's the same question. And Bishop, I don't know, or Stan, what are the thoughts around how the chairs of those two newest committees are going to be chosen to be able to convene those groups, both the Commission on Finance and the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation? Is there, are we working that out sort of after elections? Or are we trying to work that out ahead of time?
That, speaking of building the airplane while we're flying, we've mostly got the plane built. By the way, you're all safe, you're all belted in. The plane is not going to crash. I, my hope would be that Bishop Shannon, you would actually, from the people who were elected to those two entities, would appoint the chair of each of them. Does that make sense to you, Bishop?
I think Greta's question is about when will they begin meeting? Is that what it is?
No. How are we going to know who's the chair on the first meeting of these groups and get them going?
Both questions are important.
Oh, I see. Well, hmm, again, building the plane while it's being flown. I, I think that for, for some of them, it, I think it depends on who's there. So you can't, I think I'm going to have to convene them. I know that I've talked to the president of the Standing Committee already. I know that I've talked to the president of the Standing Committee already about when we will meet as a standing committee. So that's, you know, sort of a little bit different, you know, getting that set before convention happens. So we, but talking about who's going to be, be the chairperson before we've finished settling all the people, I think is hard to, to answer.
I think what I'd suggest.
Most likely. Where I'm, I'm heading at this point, because we have the people. And I think, isn't this the way you all have set it up, is that I would be appointing the people after, you know, after we've had some conversation? I'm not going to point, I'm not going to point anybody that isn't ready to say yes. So how is that too?
That's my assumption, Bishop Shannon, is that once the people are elected, so soon after diocese and convention elections, then you would look at the slate of people that were elected to CCDF and the slate elected to the Commission of Finance and appoint from that group, one of them to be chair.
Yes.
And I, and then I'm assuming also to answer to, to your second question, these groups will begin meeting soon after the diocese election, online election convention. Is that correct? Good. Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but in the past, the, there was a meet, there, there has been for the Standing Committee in particular, but I can also speak for, you know, vestry after annual meetings. They meet directly after to elect among themselves the treasurer and the, or the, the secretary and the president. That's how we have worked in the past. And so I guess we should know if that will be changing. And of course, yeah. I think that that's, I think that that's the way we've done it. So I, I guess we need to know soon ahead of time, because I've let the Standing Committee members know that we'll meet directly after, so that we can do that work, so that we can plan our next meeting.
I think that the existing groups like Standing Committee, trustees will continue as they had. We're thinking particularly about the Commission on Finance, the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation, and then the overall chair of the Commission on Missional Vitality. I'd like to, to step back that thing here. I know some of it, we're, I'm meeting with the bishop Wednesday. Perhaps we can have a further conversation with both the nominating committee and with the bishop, and then have a specific answer to the question of how the chairs of those new entities will be appointed, whether that will happen from the group itself, or whether the bishop will appoint them.
But Lisa, I would assume that the traditions and the regular way of conducting business for Standing Committee or existing and continuing groups like trustees would just continue along as it always has. There's no intention to change that mechanism, but it's these new entities that we have to consider and think through.
These are great questions. More questions, please. I can tell you're all very excited about the nominations process. Collins, please. Go ahead and unmute.
I know why I can't stay like I'm supposed to. With regard to the current slate, and especially since this is Monday and nominations close Friday. Are there certain areas that, being a Thrive member, I'm wondering if there are certain areas that it's felt that we need to try to recruit more people? Is there an area that we're soft in? And especially in these new ones. Stan, you've commented that, was it finance has several people have stepped forward? But how do we look so far is what I'm trying to get at. And, you know, do we need to ruffle the, to try to convince some more people to get involved?
Yes, I think we do. We're looking okay. But what, there's, there's a gap between people that I think are going to say yes and who have actually said yes.
Yeah.
So right now I have only two people who have actually said, make that three, who have actually said yes to the Commission on Finance. But I know there are a couple of other people out there that I think are going to do that. Right now there are only, the CCDF, we only have, I think, two people, but I also know there are several people considering. So we want both of those to get in. And I'm hoping that by Friday, we have that with good geographical representation. So there, the, this work that the nominating, pre-convention nominating committee is doing of contacting people is not complete, we were following up. So if you've been contacted and you have not yet sent in your nomination form, please do so, so we can breathe easily with all those people. If you have not yet been contacted and you want to serve, please also send in your nomination form. And I'm going to put my email in the chat after I finish saying this. So if anybody has questions about a particular group, please feel free to email me and I'll try my best to get back to you fast to answer those questions or ask now.
I can't figure out how to raise my hand. Oh, there it is. I'll raise my hand. The nominating form is set up so that it, it says that you can nominate someone else or you can nominate yourself. But the way the form is set up, it really only lends itself to nominating yourself. Stan and I have this back and forth about this. So I, I just, can someone speak to that? I mean, it just might seem awkwardly phrased if you're nominating somebody else on that form.
I would like the Queen of Candical to say something about it.
Well, I think that's a little, I understand what you're saying. I'm looking at it now. So it's because it says like, it says you can be listing someone else, but then it says I feel qualified to serve in this position because, is that what you mean? Yeah. This is where I want to say, well, I, I just make the form. So if the, if the committee, if, if Jenny at all sort of wanted to think about how to make that, because it's a really good point. Want to make that less awkward. I, I can go in there and make changes anytime. But I think that's, I understand what you're saying.
I'm pretty, I mean, I'm pretty savvy at this. And so Stan and we were both.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I don't even think it's a tech thing. I totally get it. It's an awkwardness of how it's worded. I, and I'm not quite sure how to, how to fix that, but I'm sure there is a way.
I, I just want anyone to not do it because they were like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Weirded out. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think it'd be all trying to go in and change that language. So it's, it, it.
So, so, well, let's, we can talk about this offline, about how best to do that. Okay, cool.
Other questions? That was very helpful, Jenny. Thank you. Seeing no further hands up.
So Stan, just to, to also add to the question or the statement that was made about, you know, going out and, and trying to recruit people, that, that obviously will be very helpful. But one of the reasons why we set the date for September 16th is because the nominating committee will be meeting shortly after that. And we will look at what we have and we will definitely be going and calling people and emailing people also. So there will be recruiting that will be done. We want you to have your stuff in by September 16th. Don't get me wrong. But if at that point, we don't have the, the volume that we would like to see, then we will be doing some recruiting.
Jenny is speaking from vast experience.
I'd say then that yes, and, and I'm not saying that there isn't a deadline, but say you come across somebody on the 16th at midnight. Then mail to Jenny and let her know, hey, this person would be really great. And here's why. Answer all of those questions, you know, not why are you qualified, but why is this person qualified? And that they said yes, you know, don't, don't nominate somebody that hasn't, you haven't talked to and isn't going to.
Jenny Anderson, you, please go ahead with your question or comment.
So I have a quick question. The Committee on Congregational, sorry for the dog barking. Committee on Congregational Development and Formation includes people interested in creation care. And I would imagine that would be a lot about climate and earth care and that kind of thing. This is sort of the catch-all committee then, for those who are interested in special kinds of things like that. Is that, that's my observation in the way the new information is formed. And so I wanted to get some affirmation about my observation, if you can. Thanks.
I would use, I would say yes, but not call it catch-all, because I think it's more intentional than that. This is where people will serve who really have a passion for mission. And not just creation care and anti-racism. Those are essential. Those two groups already exist and will be housed there. But also any new missional kinds of, of things that come up. So it's a really important, I think, full of energy and kind of juicy committee in a good, in the best way. So Greta.
I like juicy. Thank you, Stan.
That's such a good question.
That's very good. A great clarification. And I'm sorry to step on you, Greta.
No, that's fine. Just to add to what Stan was saying, Jenny, for further clarification, the, the CCFD, CCDF, obviously my alphabet is screwed up in my head, is not necessarily the doer of all the things, but sort of the thinker about all the things and sort of the, the organizational sort of aspect of the things. Doesn't mean it won't be also doing things like providing education and setting up programs. But when, when the bishop appoints a special task force for a special thing around mission, it will fall under that group to sort of be paying attention and asking the chairs of those task forces, hey, how's it going? What are you learning? You know, do you want to come and tell us what's happening? And let's send that on to the Standing Committee and, you know, all of those kinds of things. So it's, 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 yeah, it's for people who are passionate about mission in every, every form, not just the specific forms that have already been gathered, although as those gather, they will gather under that, under that group. But that group isn't necessarily doing all that work. It's sort of overseeing and organizing and thinking and creating and visioning, sort of those kinds of things, if that helps.
That was very helpful, Greta. And just to repeat that and sort of to say the obvious, the Committee on, on, on Creation and, and the Anti-Racism Committee will give periodic reports to the CCDF so that they can both support that work, know how that work is going, spread it out to the diocese at large and, and sort of oversee it in that sense. So thank you, Greta. That was very helpful.
Helpful. And it sounds like very good administration.
Yes. Other questions? David?
Thanks. Just an observation. As we're going into new territory with, with new structures in the diocese. And here we are, a, a group sort of in the know. I'm concerned about when we try to engage folks beyond these smaller leadership groups that we not use abbreviations for the various things. So that we can have some clarity about which things we're talking about. And that folks that are out there wanting to find more information would be able to do so more easily than, than doing the alphabetizing.
Thank you, David. I, I agree 100%. I have to say, the reason I keep saying CCDF is it helps me remember Committee on Congregational Development and Formation, because I was, I, I've used it as a mnemonic. But I agree completely in talking to people who are, have not been using these abbreviations. Please, please use the full name and I will do that too. I, I, it was, it was, it's, it's finally been able to sink into my, into my brain, because I, the, that's a mnemonic. But, but yes, you're absolutely right. Other people? I'm going to turn this over to Bishop Shannon now, who has both, I think, a short message for us and will also end us with prayer or blessing or both.
Well, my only message is just thank you all for being here, for caring about the future of our diocese. And again, my thanks, I can't thank the Thrive leaders enough for the hundreds of hours that they've spent and all the thoughtfulness, all the prayer, all the discussions and dedication to our life together and your presence here, those of you who were not part of Thrive is also an extension of your care and concern. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Encourage others, recruit others. And I look forward to seeing, hopefully, most of you at convention in person. And then I hope that the rest of you that are not delegates will observe what happens at the voting part of convention. And just keep all of this work on the top of your mind and in your prayers too, please. God be with you. Gracious God, we thank you for this evening and are especially grateful for the gift of your Holy Spirit. Suddenly, the gift of your Holy Spirit stirring our creativity and our dreams and hopes for the work that you've given us together. We pray that you would bless all of our efforts and keep us encouraged as we step out of the boat and go closer to Jesus. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I just put in the chat, the next town hall is on Saturday, the 24th at 10 o'clock on Canons. Go in peace, to love and serve the Lord.
Thanks, Peter God. Thank you, Stan. Thank you, everybody.